I'd like to call this meeting to order. You and the clerk please call her on.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Barry, councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Snapper.
Here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Okay, does any councilmember, oh, let me just mention that councilmember Barry will not be here this evening. Any council comments? Councilmember Snapper.
Yes, I was very pleased to see in our packet the letter from DHCD that the community legacy application was approved. That was a really happy thing to see, particularly in this tight budget year.
And would you like to note what the funds will be available for?
I was just gonna do that. These funds were given to assist you with the New Hampshire Avenue Corridor Initiative in the amount of $150,000, Main Street Tacoma Market Study in the amount of $30,000, and the Main Street Tacoma Revolving Loan Fund in the amount of $125,000. So, good news.
I agree. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know that Pat Lovelace, who is a frequent visitor to these council chambers on our meeting nights, has had successful heart surgery. His bypass operation was uneventful, praise the Lord, and he's now recovering at the nursing home and will be back with us in six weeks to two months.
And Barry O. Thank you. I just wanted to remind folks that we'll have Earth Week coming up next month in April, and the city will be having a number of celebrations and events during that week. And, of course, one of those, as always, will be Arbor Day. Another one will be the Tacoma Foundation Azalea Awards. And I just wanted to let people know that one of the things that I'd like to do during Earth Week is to inaugurate a new policy for the city of no longer purchasing bottled water. And so, as we have our bottled water up here, it's your last chance. And I'm hoping that we can come up with some containers. I'm not sure if we can do-
That's bad for you.
Yeah, I'm not sure we can do much about some of the other things, but I think the bottled water is the main one, since there are definitely other sources for better water than bottled water. And hoping that we can come up with some containers so that when we want a drink of water, we have those to use. I'd like us to come up with a, maybe a decent city container. And I'm working with some folks to try and come up with some options on that. I did note that I got something from the Montgomery County Pedestrian Safety Advisory Committee. And the first item on their agenda was introductions and coffee. And then they say, "Try one of our new blue reusable cups, but leave it behind." So, a number of organizations and agencies are trying to make this move. And I think it's appropriate for Earth Week, so stay tuned. Councilmember Robinson, not to be outdone on a green issue.
Yes, exactly. I heard from somebody in the Green Party who lives in Kensington that Kensington replaced, or had Pepco replace, all their light bulbs last year with energy-efficient light bulbs. So, that was something I thought would be a good idea in this town. And I don't know, I'll try to follow up and bring you more specifics, City Manager, well, Matthew's about how they were able to pull that off. And the other thing is that tomorrow night, I wouldn't ordinarily announce a Neighborhood Association meeting, but tomorrow night, here in the community center, there will be a meeting of the SS Carroll Neighborhood Association, and there will be a report from their committee on the Tacoma Junction. So, those of you who are in my ward or who have an interest in Tacoma Junction want to hear a preliminary report from a committee of SS Carroll that's been looking at that, please come at 7:30.
Boy, they weren't even, now they're more popping up. Councilmember Wright, and then back to Councilmember Siemens.
Just very quickly, Mayor, your comments about this day in April reminds me that there's a group, the Green Building Group in Tacoma Park is planning a green building house tour. They have not selected an exact date for it yet, but if people are interested in having their house on the green building house tour, I don't have the gentleman's email with me right now, but if you'll email me at josh@wright@gmail.com, I'll make sure it gets to him.
I wanted to direct something towards Councilmember Robinson. I just, you know, in the past, we've had, Tacoma Park has had a history of being an environmental leader in the nation. And I've been surprised to see that we're not on the leading edge anymore as we have been in the past. I saw that Raleigh, North Carolina just passed a resolution forbidding the installation of household garbage disposals because of the amount of grease that goes down the pipes. I'm just trying to encourage you to continue to bring these issues to it.
Okay. We'll move on. I just wanted to note for the record that I issued a proclamation recognizing Tacoma Park Lesbians and Gays 20th Anniversary. This is a group who have been having a brunch every month for 20 years, never missed a month. It's generally a social group. I've been part of that group since its second brunch. Wasn't there for the first. And it's been a group that's been active at various levels in the city on a number of issues through the years. Had an interest in donating money, when the group had money, to various things in the city. And was active in putting together some various forums, some workshops, and various things on issues. At this point, it's mostly social, but I thought it was worthy that they've been active for 20 years. So, the 20th Anniversary brunch was at my house. And I said it was a little odd issuing a proclamation that could have gone to me, but I gave it to other people who said they wanted it. So... Then, under additional agenda items and the scheduling, agenda scheduling, I just wanted to point out one or two things about upcoming agendas. First off, to remind the public that we will not be meeting next week. It's the fifth Monday of the month. And as a reward for some hard work and additional meetings on additional days, and also to give the staff a little chance to catch their breath, we will not be meeting next week, but we'll pay for it heavily in April and May. In May, when we double up and have budget work sessions on Thursdays, so we'll more than make up for it. Also, because of that, with no meeting next week, what we will need to do on April 7th is revisit the discussion that we had last week about some possible capital funding sharing with the county and Piney Branch Pool issues. Couple of us were at another meeting with folks from the county last week and had presentation and update on possibilities there. And that item needs to come to a head pretty quickly as far as the county's capital budget, so we will be having a discussion on that at our next meeting on the 7th. And a reminder that we, the council and some of the Recreation Committee folks are going to Green Belt to tour their recreation facilities this Saturday. And the meeting in general on the 7th has a lot of items that are discussions of understandings and MOUs with other organizations. And that's gonna be most of that meeting, so that will have a focus there. The next item on the agenda is adoption of the minutes.
Like to move them?
February 11th and 19th. They've been moved, we're here second.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Siemens, seconded by Councilmember Snapper, closely followed by Councilmember Wright. Are there any substantive changes to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the minutes?
Aye.
Any names? Okay, they are adopted. Next item on the agenda is public comment period. That's comments directed on any item that is not on a legislative agenda. So, anything that is on any work session, agenda item tonight, or anything that is not on the agenda at all. If you'd like to speak, come to the microphone and identify yourself, and hopefully keep your comments to three minutes. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Sonia Cooper's, and I'm a 10-year resident of Ward 5. I wanted to speak with you today about the subject of zoned parking, which I am in favor of. However, I feel that there is a problem with the way that zoned parking is currently implemented in terms of the way that it affects those of us who spend a fair amount of time in the city of Tacoma Park during the course of the day. As a stay-at-home mother with two young children, I spend a lot of time going to visit other people who live within the confines of the city. I'm also involved in a number of community organizations which require me to go visit other people in the city to drop things off, to chat with them for a few minutes, to work with them on various community activities. As a result of this, I've come across problems in obtaining parking permits myself so that people can park in front of my house. The police people downstairs can tell you that I'm usually there twice a month to pick up temporary parking permits for people who are coming to visit my house. And so, that's obviously a problem for me, and that it requires me to go there pretty frequently. Also, some of the people who I might like to visit don't always have a permit available, which makes it difficult for me to park legally when I visit them. So, it's a problem both when people come to visit me and when I go to visit them. It also really impairs my ability to just drop by somebody's house because I have to make an arrangement ahead of time to make sure that they have a parking permit available. This is also a problem when visiting Jackie Park because there are very few legal parking spaces for which you don't have to be in the particular zone that is next to Jackie Park. So, that's sort of the outline of the problem, which I have shared with Ruben in great detail in the past. And if anyone wants to know more about it, I'm sure he can tell you about it. I would like to propose, there are a number of possible solutions and a number of angles on this problem, but the particular solution that I wanted to propose was that we allow people who live in Tacoma Park to visit other people in Tacoma Park for two or three hours at a time without risking getting a parking violation. I can think of a number of different ways to implement this, ranging from having some kind of Tacoma Park sticker that would be available to anyone whether or not they lived in a parking zone. And then the police could look for that sticker and not ticket you if you hadn't been there for a while. Or, if that would be too complicated for the police, the other proposal I have is based on a system widely used in Germany where each person carries in their car a dial which they set for the time when they arrive. And then all the police have to do is look to see if it's been however long since you arrived, and they can then give you a ticket accordingly. So, I think that changing this system would really enhance our ability to visit each other within the community. And I think that's a community-building measure that I hope we can all be in favor of. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I follow up a little bit?
Sure.
We had a round of conversation with the chief about this issue, and he wasn't particularly enthusiastic about the dial thing. I never did quite understand why exactly he didn't like the dial thing. But he felt that residents who had this problem should just call, and then somehow magically, they wouldn't get a ticket. The whole thing was, in my mind, not really resolved in a very useful way because it was left up to the particular people to have to call and talk to the police department. There wasn't going to be any sort of official thing that said, "Yes, I called, don't give me a ticket." It all felt a little ad hoc, I guess I would say. And so, as Sonia indicated, there's a number of folks who are looking for something a little more formal. So, perhaps we could ask the city manager to research this a little bit and come up with something. This isn't a large number of people. It's not a small number of people, it's not a large number of people. And it tends to, of course, be, as you indicated, families with small children, so they're, in a sense, have a little less time to go down to the police department with their kids trailing around and so on.
I'll recognize two more colleagues, but I don't want to turn this into an agenda item.
I just wanted to say that I think in Forest Park, when we did ours, the parking permits there, everybody got two guest passes. So, if somebody came over, they have a little paper guest pass that they put-
Two isn't enough.
-in their window. If somebody was having a party or something, they could actually call the police and let them know.
Right, hence the problem.
We haven't had any problem with it at all.
In Ward 1, being close to the metron, sensitive to this issue from the other end where people might potentially abuse it. So, I do think it's important that we come up with a good solution. I would suggest two possibilities. One, in New Haven, Connecticut, you can actually buy, this is for, instead of tickets, but you could do, sorry, instead of fitting the meter, you could do a similar thing, which is basically like a scratch ticket. You rub off the times that you came, and you just stick it in your window. And then the second possibility is this sort of, the internet seems like a very good solution to this, that we could write a relatively simple application, and probably knows how simple it could be, where people would go online, register when they needed the permit, and then they would be able to print out this official thing that had specific times on it and a number associated with it if an officer ever needed to check. Seems like a pretty simple, easy solution, too.
I think with those suggestions, the city manager might be able to come back with some thoughts. Thank you.
Any other subsequent comment?
Okay, then we'll move on to the city manager's comments.
Actually, nothing to report this evening.
Okay. Then, we'll move on to interviews first for the Board of Elections. I understand that one of the interviewees won't be here this evening and needs to reschedule. So, if Anand Parik is here, if you want to come up, whatever's easiest, if you want to sit at the table, that's fine. Welcome, and thank you for your interest. And if you'd just like to give a brief synopsis of your interests.
Sure. As many of you may recognize, I've worked the last couple municipal elections, and I've had a great time. I think the city clerk approached me a couple of years ago about serving on this board and very interested in doing so. Some commitments at home wouldn't allow me at the time, but I think I'm hoping to meld my two concerns together. And so far, they're behaving okay. But I do have a great interest in this. I think municipal elections are a fabulous way for newer folks to Tacoma to get involved in city politics and city government. And I've had great opportunity. I've also done some work with the Personnel Appeals Board a lot recently. And there are a couple of issues that are particularly of concern to me. The most recent, in the most recent municipal elections, the use of IRV and the computer scanning system. I have some thoughts that I've shared with other members of the board previously, and a little bit with Jillian tonight that I'd like to get into further. But also, to broaden the marketing, the education outreach to other members of this community that have not come out in great numbers to vote. I think one of the most fabulous things about this city is that we recognize the importance of all our residents. And I'm not sure all of our residents know that they can come and vote, participate, non-citizens. I became a US citizen just four years ago, and I'm very excited about my involvement in government and politics. And I think a lot of our community members would be as well. So, those are two of my interests for this position.
Great, thank you. Any questions, observations? Thanks for your interest, and we will be making appointments shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna guess that you're Ron Verdonk?
I am.
Okay, I don't see the other two people who are gonna be interviewed, so if you want to come up here and talk to you about your interest in the Recreation Committee.
Hi.
So, if you would just tell us a little bit about your interest?
Well, I believe, as I scribbled on the application, I apologize if it's not completely knowledgeable, that recreation is fundamental and vital to a healthy community. I have, over the years, been very much involved in recreation, more so outside of Tacoma Park, only having been a resident now since December, or homeowner, I should say, since December of 2006. But I rented previously since July of 2005. And, yeah, I've coached children's baseball and soccer teams, and am a regular participant in different athletic events myself. And I just think it's, as I say, fundamental and basic to having a well-functioning community that as many of those people in the community be in as good a shape as possible. And I'd like to make my contribution in that regard.
Great. Any questions? Councilmember Clay?
Do you live in the city of Tacoma Park?
I think I do. We live on 110 Ritchie Avenue, and it happens to be in Ward 4. As Councilmember Siemens confirmed.
But the post office address is Silver Spring.
Right.
Some people have a Tacoma Park post office address, but they actually live in Silver Spring, is that right?
Yes, it goes both ways.
Great.
This is the other way around.
Thank you for volunteering.
Sure.
Any other questions? Thanks very much, appreciate your interest.
Thank you.
And I guess, City Clerk, we've got a couple of people to reschedule. And I guess maybe, I don't know, we'll be a little bit flexible if one of the other people who we were gonna interview for Recreation shows up tonight. We might just jump back and try and do that if they get here shortly.
And I believe we have another applicant from Ward 4 who will be signing in her application soon.
Great. Are you Sue? Come on up. Perfect timing.
Almost.
Have a seat at the table. We just talked to another applicant for the Rec Committee, and so we were just kind of getting ready to move on and said, "Hope somebody else shows up and you walk in." So, if you'll talk to us a little bit about your interest in applying for the Recreation Committee.
Sure. Sorry if I was late, I thought it was eight. So, I've been on the older version of the Rec Committee for a lot of years. I'm not sure how many, maybe 10. I run camps in town. I work with a lot of kids, I've done a lot of coaching. I have a degree, a master's degree in gerontology, so I have an interest in seniors. And as a citizen since, I don't know, 1975, I guess, I want to make sure that the department runs well and serves everybody in the community. And I'm moving on in my life right now to another phase, which is a personal trainer. And because I really care about people and their bodies, and kids especially, kids, seniors, the whole lifespan, you know, staying fit and healthy. And I want to make sure that this is something that we really advocate for in the Rec Department.
Great. Any questions? Thanks for your interest.
My pleasure.
Yeah, we're, I think we still have, what, one or two that we haven't talked to?
I have, these, what I had scheduled tonight were the last of the applications or any interests that I had received.
Did you just say?
Yes, and there's one more resident of Ward 4, Susan Wood, who has expressed an interest in joining. And she'll be sending her application in.
So, I guess we'll maybe start to, I'll take a look at what we've got tomorrow and what else we've got coming in, and we'll decide whether we can put something on. Because I know that we'd like to get folks named and get this up. Oh, and here's one more. Roy, come on up, have a seat at the table. If we just talk about process for 30 seconds, we'll give you time to get here.
Thank you, sorry.
It's okay. Welcome, and if you'd like to talk a little bit about your interest in serving on the Recreation Committee.
All right.
And tell us who you are.
My name is Roy Austin, and I, my wife Tracy, my son Trey, who's five, and my daughter Peyton, who's one. We all live here on Carroll Avenue. We came to Tacoma Park about five years ago from San Francisco. We've been looking for a community to live in and to raise a family. My wife, we're looking for someplace that actually had a sense of community, and someplace where people were close and where people were raising children. And where there was a great deal to do with those children and with other families. And we've found that here in Tacoma Park. We've found that without question here. And what we've done is, or what I've done, is I've been very active, most active with soccer, with my son, who's been playing, I believe now, two to three years. And I've been coaching. And I've been a part of the Rec Committee for approximately the last year and a half to two years. And participated in our discussions. When I first got with the Rec Committee, we were talking about the possibility of allowing alcoholic beverages here in the community center for certain functions. We had representatives from the art community in particular who wanted to hold open houses and have, or art shows, I should say, and allow there to be a certain amount of wine. And that was our first discussion. We talked about the stage. We moved on to discussions about a possibility of a gym. Pretty much everything that, everything that could possibly make this community something which is better, more inviting than it already is. And another question is what exactly to do with the community center to the extent that it is underutilized by the large number of people that we have in this community who really could use and could benefit from this. And I think the community could benefit from having more people get together here and finding ways to attract families and attract from the very young to the significantly older to come here, see the beautiful resources that are here, and use it. So, it's for those reasons that I have applied for a real position on the real Rec Committee as opposed to the Rec Committee as it exists right now.
Any questions? The unofficial one has existed for years. Do you have questions?
I would just say thanks for volunteering. And a good friend of mine, is a former colleague of yours, and one of the best soccer players I know, Rob Ponte. He's actually suggested I connect up with you, so it's nice to meet you here at the council meeting.
Yeah, I know Rob from San Francisco.
alcoholic beverages here in the community center for certain functions. We had representatives from the art community in particular who wanted to hold open houses and have, or art shows, I should say, and allow there to be a certain amount of wine. And that was our first discussion, we talked about the stage, we moved on to discussions about a possibility of a gym, pretty much everything that, everything that could possibly make this community something which is, which is better, more inviting than it already is. And another question is what exactly to do with the community center, to the extent that it is underutilized by the large number of people that we have in this community who really could use and could benefit from this, and I think the community could benefit from having more people get together here and finding ways to attract families and attract from the very young to the significantly older, to come here, see the beautiful resources that are here and use it. So it's for those reasons that I have applied for a real position on the real Rec Committee, as opposed to the, the Rec Committee as it exists right now.
Any questions? Yep, the unofficial one has existed for years. Do you have a question?
I would just say thanks for volunteering, and a good friend of mine, is a former colleague who isn't one of the best soccer players I know, Rob Ponte, and he's actually suggested I connect up with you, so it's nice to meet you here at the council meeting.
Yeah, I know Rob from San Francisco, and yeah, phenomenal soccer player.
Thanks for, thanks for volunteering.
Thank you. And we'll be making appointments shortly.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay, I noticed on the, on the applications in this batch that it looked like there were two of them that were potentially incomplete, where the question about the current on their taxes and fees didn't necessarily get answered, and in one case it wasn't on the form.
That was probably a case of the formatting, I suspect, being mixed up from, I suspect it was a formatting problem in emailing the form and getting it back.
Okay.
We do, the people get, all the applicants get the forms, so they are on notice that that is a concern, and we do check with the library and with the finance office for all applicants.
Okay, so even, even if the answer isn't on the form, they've already been?
We do check that, and we would flag it to them if there was.
Okay, good, thank you. So the next item is a first reading ordinance authorizing installation of speed humps in the 7600 block of Hammond Avenue. Would somebody like to move that?
Where is Hammond Avenue?
Ward 6.
I'll move it.
Thank you. And the second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Is there any discussion on speed hump installation on 7600 block of Hammond Avenue? Is there any public comment on installation of speed humps on 7600 block of Hammond Avenue? Going once, going twice. Yes, somebody's beating it. Okay, this is the first reading, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes at first reading. We now have the first reading ordinance authorizing installation of speed humps in the 1100 block of Merwood Drive, which is also in Ward 6.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Same first and seconders. Any comments on speed humps? Any public comments? If I can just note that I was happy to see that the language on this one was the same as on the other one, where it's a general nonspecific installation language, and that leaves some flexibility for the installation. I know in this instance they had requested two, but the policy of the city has been to try and write the ordinances so that there's flexibility, and if something needs to be adjusted later, we don't have to revisit the ordinance because it was specified in the ordinance. All those in favor of authorizing installation on 1100 block of Merwood, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes as well. Next item is a first reading ordinance admitting that Tacoma Park Code Chapter 16, Stormwater Management. Public works want to introduce this?
Yes, I just wanted to point out a couple of changes since you saw it in our session. The most significant is that we had the opportunity to talk to the Maryland Department of Environment about our proposed changes. They are required, and we are required, to have MDE's approval of our stormwater ordinance as we, as a condition of our MPDES permit. The city's Attorney's Office had raised the issue of making sure that they were okay with this. They indicated in two conversations and a written email to the city engineer that strengthening the ordinance, which is how we described it and how they read it at our draft language, would in no way be a problem for them, and they didn't see any, any issues with the proposed language that we had developed. In having us reviewed by the Deputy City Manager last week, she pointed out that there was some math errors in the way the existing code was written, based on the way the multifamily charges were for both review fees and then our proposed permit fees. There were actually several cases in which if you had more units, you were paying less than if you had fewer, because as the fee schedule dropped $5, it ended up with some discrepancies between those division points. So we suggested some language that would clarify and make fair the rate structure, and that it would be across the board in a more uniform way, and we wouldn't end up in situations where if you had seven units, you were paying less than if you had five units. So that's what you see before you. We included the review fee as a way to clarify that language and just do a straight across the board $20 per unit with a minimum of $100, that minimum had existed previously, and that a multifamily dwelling that was actually more than 20 units would be considered as a commercial or industrial or institutional use and be charged on a per-square-foot basis. Those type of apartment buildings are gonna have a larger square footage, gonna have a larger parking lot, and probably are more appropriate to be reviewed as a, as a commercial and larger land use development. So those are the two changes that you'll see before you this evening from what we talked about, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago in our session.
And if I can just point out that the other area, the other general area that this covers is eliminating the exemption for commercial properties under 5,000 square feet of land area to fall under the rules.
Yeah, that was the original intent that draws to.
Right. Are there any questions? Councilmember Wright?
I was just curious, do we have a sense of how, over like the last, say, two or three years, how many commercial projects were under that 5,000 that would, in the future?
I would say in the last two years, we've had three, two of which have voluntarily complied with the ordinance, and, you know, we were real pleased to see that, one didn't. So it's, it's one of those things where you kinda hit spells where you have a lot and then not so many, but in general, I think our stormwater view and commercial activity has been increasing over the past few years. So I would anticipate we keep at that pace, if not more, in the future.
Other questions? Would somebody like to move the ordinance?
Move.
I think that was a move by Councilmember Simmons and a second by Councilmember Wright. Any further discussion? Any public comment on the ordinance? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading of the ordinance carries. Next is a resolution establishing the Washington Adventist Hospital Land Use Committee. Would somebody like to move the ordinance? It's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Aye. First by Councilmember Clay, second by Councilmember Snipper. Questions, comments, observations? This is establishing the Land Use Committee that we have been talking about for?
Two years.
Only two years? We said we were gonna hold off and establish the other one first, then there were questions about whether we would go back and pursue it into one.
We did it well.
So now it's time. Is there any public comment? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. We are now at the Consent Agenda, which is a resolution recognizing Arbor Day in Tacoma Park and a resolution providing for an appointment to the Committee on the Environment. Seeing no people wanting to pull anything off, will we vote on the Consent Agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent Agenda. Gee, was there? It's, it's easy to just get rolling.
Move the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Councilmember Clay, Councilmember Snipper. And we'll re-vote, all in favor of the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Let's do it.
Let's do it again. I would like to move on to the City Arborist Annual Record. He's here, we'll do this, and then we can, let him go home earlier than he thought he was gonna go home.
You have to move the PowerPoint.
Oh, well then we'll take a break? How long does it take?
Make sure that that's right, yeah.
All right, fun.
One time, you've got it.
Man, we'll take a break until, pick a number, 8:23 on that clock.
Oh, God.
10:30, that one.
Is this on?
Is this on? Hi, I'm Todd Bolton, Arborist for the city of Towne Park. My annual report on what happened last year and a little bit about this year as well. You all got a... The letter that I sent to Tree City USA. Which has some statistics on how many applications, what they were for, and compared to previous years. There'll be more than 200 applications for tree removal. And this is a not very good slide, but it... The dots, this shows all the, all the removal applications received. And, and the dots are sized proportionately to the size of the tree. And so some of them are so small you can't see, but the large ones, you can see what it is. It's a 30-inch diameter tree, which is measured four and a half feet up. It's assumed to have a 60-foot canopy. It's sort of fairly common size for your oats around town. And it just, that you can see any dots, sort of shows that they have an impact when you remove. This is all of the applications. See, they're fairly well spread out across the city. A few less, this, the map is tilted so that it fits. A few less over towards University of New Hampshire. I'm in the 60s, 50s.
Is that just a 07?
This is, oh, I'm sorry, this is 07. Yeah, just mislabelled. Yeah, that's, thank you for noticing that. This is 07, all year long. We're so far into 08 that I'm getting confused. This is just a sample of the size changes. With the bottom one being probably a 36 or so inch tree. Because it, it spans a 50-foot lot, the canopy does. Then there was great, big one up there in the corner between Holt and Park. Which is there in the top left corner. And then some of the smaller ones, which go down to eight or 10 or 14 inches. Don't really have as much impact on, on the slide. This is the reasons for removal. Which is what I find more alarming than anything else in the data that I've collected. The brown dots are waivers. And I give waivers for dead, dying, or for hazardous trees. They're already gone. Work isn't going to save them. And I think there were a tremendous number of those. More than three-quarters of the permits I issued were for removal of dead trees. Which means that they're not getting cared for. Or they would be taking them down when they began to die. Or I would be offering more advice on tree care. And we'd be having a higher number that were permitted. In that there was sort of four or five years to live, but we're obviously on the way out. The purple, there were 20-some undesirable species. Mostly mulberries were removed. And then the permits are the blue. And there were fewer denials than permits. I think there were 70-some permits issued, which is trees removed for cause. Wrong tree in the wrong place. You know, somebody planted too close to the house, it's beginning to damage the foundation. Some reason like that. The tree may still be healthy, but it's time to take it out for some reason. Somebody's limbed a Norway spruce up so that it's about four foot of green on top of a 20-foot stick. Something like that, I'll give a permit. Those trees either have to be replaced, or the property owner, the person doing the removing, sends a $175 check to the city that goes into the tree planting fund. So there were, I think, 70-some of those. I wish, should have brought the statistics with me, but that's in the four-page report that went to Tree City USA. And we actually got our proclamation Friday in the mail. That we are Tree City for the 26th year, I think, in a row. So that'll be coming around, just in, in your mail shortly. Thank you. Okay, so 60, 60 blue dots. Just 118 brown. 19 light green, which is the denials. And those are people that wanted, that applications that I felt didn't meet the criteria of a removal. The tree was healthy. People wanted to remove American hollies because they couldn't play in the yard barefoot. Because the leaves were hard to walk on. So that doesn't really meet the criteria in the code for a reason for a removal permit. Here is the picture where I've totaled all the removals at the two-foot diameter per inch of... Two foot per diameter of canopy for inch of diameter of trunk. Created a square foot circle. The big one is how much canopy was lost last year in square feet. And that little dot on the lower right is the trees that we are requiring to be replanted. It's about the same proportion as last year. And it says that we're going the wrong way.
Todd? Do you have any sense of how much additional canopy through ordinary growth we're getting? Would that, would that play a part?
That would absolutely play a part, but that, that's something that happens every year. What we're losing is the big trees. So even if, and, and pi is a wonderful thing in, in sizes. Pi, 3.1415. Which is what affects the size of the canopy. For every inch of caliper, every inch of diameter, you gain two feet of width on the circle. And in that two-foot addition on the circle is a tremendous, is times 3.1415. So that's, a six-inch tree is, I mean, 18 times bigger than a two-inch tree. As far as canopy coverage.
But, how many, how many of the trees that have the potential of getting big are being planted?
I'm trying to get to a real analysis of whether the entire canopy is shrinking, or whether what you see in the entire canopy is shrinking.
I would say the entire canopy is shrinking at this point. What has happened is that the oaks, the white oaks and chestnut oaks that have been growing for 80, 120 years have run out of root space, basically. In, in the yards where there's pavement and foundation and street, that takes up what used to be available, would enforce the available root space. That they would be competing for, but there would be nutrients and water available. And so when they're in a yard that is 100 feet by 50 feet, and 30% of that's impervious, then they're getting stressed because they've reached the size on the soil volume and they're maxed out. And we haven't replanted 40 years ago. We don't have an understory in most of the city of trees waiting to replace those that come down. I, I do at some point hope to get a, an inventory of trees on private property so that we can have some idea what the true state is. Generally, I think if we looked at, if we had good quality annual photographs, we would see that we're losing, you know, I'd ballpark at 5% of the canopy a year. I think we're going to hit a real bottom probably 10 to 15 or 16 years out at the rate that we're losing the big trees.
So the, the strategy is to, is to really try to push the understory now as best we can?
Plant, plant overstory trees, if, even if you've got a great big oak, let's plant two or three oaks under it so that they can get in, get established, and start to fill in so that when that big one does go, you've got an established tree that's ready to jump and fill the, fill the sky space.
Does a sycamore count?
Sycamores count. They grow really big, really fast.
They grow fast?
Yeah. They, they tend to fall apart fast too, but they're better than, they're better than silver maples at that. Anyway, this is what we're fighting, this progression. This is one way we're fighting it. The city through various funding measures was able to plant 118 trees last year. Some, like, if you can find the Maple Avenue, the city building, and Grant Avenue going up behind it. Which is down there in the lower left corner. The city building, there were a bunch of trees left over from the renovation addition that were sitting up at Public Works Yard. I brought down and put out. Seems like a bunch of them have actually survived through the winter. We'll see how they do through this summer. And then some trees were added out in front and over on the library side. And as I'm trying to sort of start an arboretum, so when people want to know what to plant, I can say, "There's one of these down there, go take a look." And people can get an idea of what they're putting in their yards. Grant Avenue was, I think, six cherries that were done for safe streets. Safe routes to school, grant paid for putting on the sidewalk, put in the sidewalk. There were some trees that were in the way and some trees that needed to come down anyway. The grant paid for replacement. And there was, there was another few that were funded through different means. Over at Wildwood and, or Glen Side in New Hampshire, as part of a streetscape, something was put in. One of the issues I ran into, and I'm not sure what to do about it, and we can talk about this some, somehow. I had, I ordered 40 trees to be planted there in the top two groups of housing on either side of Long Branch, but north of Sligo. Just regular street trees of various kinds. And sent out letters notifying the homeowner that these trees were coming in. And 11 out of the 40 homeowners said, "Not in my yard." So I'm looking for alternate places to put them. But with the 25% projection rate, which is maybe just in that part, although I wouldn't bet on it, we're going to have trouble filling all the holes in the canopy and making boulevards of trees. But just something to think about and maybe we can work on something over the next few months. We are starting another, and 30 bulk buy was where Stadler agreed to supply, plant, and guarantee trees on private lots at city wholesale prices. So they, they offered us a sale price and I organized and collected funds. All approved to transfer and then we put them in the yards. We're doing another one, starting sort of in the next week. That will highlight over Arbor Day. And we hope to get another 30 or maybe more with a bit better advertising this spring. And those, that species, I, street trees are sized according to whether they're wires or not. The bulk buy trees, I'm only offering full-size overstory shade trees. Because that's what we're losing. People want pretty trees, they can do that on their own. So that's sort of the report on 07. Got some other things happening.
Can you just say a little bit more about what you just referred to as pretty trees?
Dogwoods, red buds, the understory forest trees.
Little, little showy?
Little showy ones. The understory forest, understory trees that don't really provide that much canopy. I'll use them as street trees under the wires, where that's the only plant that's really smart to put there. But since my main intent is to promote large trees, they're not going to be offered on the bulk buy sale.
Can you do a quick list of the, the overstory trees that we recommend?
Understory trees? Overstores are ash oaks, and there's a whole bunch of oaks. There's white ash, green ash, a whole bunch of oaks. Your maples, but sugar and red. Not Norway, and I wouldn't put silver maple near our residents. They tend to grow fast and fall apart. Sycamores work. They, they're big and sort of messy, but if you've got enough room, they can be a really nice tree. I'm trying to find some lindens, which is basswood, or in English parlance, those are the lime trees that you hear of being in hollies. There's a native tree that's really nice, there's a couple of pretty ones over on Pine Street. They have a lovely fragrant flower.
What are those?
Lindens.
Lindens?
Tilia, yeah. Their little leaf is an imported, and large leaf for American basswood is a common name.
Is that list on the, on the internet anywhere?
There is on the internet, on the city's website. There's a list of trees broken out by size and use. If you go to the city's website. And I'm not sure, I, maybe go to the Arborist page and it's linked in there somewhere. It's, I, I pulled the recommended tree list off the Fairfax County website. Edited, got rid of some of the invasives and some of the trees that have been found in the 10 years since they made their list to fall apart and put it up on our website. And, and it says if you've got 30 to 60 feet, or you want a tree that ends up 30 to 60 feet wide, this is good, 30 to 60 feet tall, this is good. So that's worth going to if, if you want to find out what to plant. Um, so that's worth, uh, going to if, if you wanna find out what to plant.
Good.
Um, and that's better than I can remember everything. Then this coming spring, we've got gypsy moth is a problem and these colors maybe didn't work very well. Um, all of the colored areas out there are where the state monitors for gypsy moth. And what they do is come out and run samples where they count egg masses in either a fortieth of an acre or twenty-fifth of an acre. And then they'll, in, in a random sample, so over five yards, they'll catch six selections and count the egg masses and then they create an average for that area that they sampled in. And the minimum required for spraying by the state this year, I believe, was five hundred egg masses per acre, which is a really high number. Um, the dry springs that we've had the last two years, um, have allowed gypsy moth populations to rebound up to dangerous levels or harmful levels. We lost three really lovely white oaks over off of Woodland last year primarily due to gypsy moth, although the drought stress and other things caused a problem. Um, with the state budget shutting, being tight and then limiting it to places where there were five hundred egg masses or more, they were unable to spray places that they thought would be affected, which include the blue areas. Uh, the county has stepped up and is paying for spraying in those three areas. Um, and I, the price I heard was it's about five thousand dollars for what's being done in the city. Um, I think we can look forward to the county, perhaps not being able to fund it or being interested in funding it in the next couple of years and we might wanna be thinking about having money for that. They would coordinate it, hope we could chip in and make sure that we're covered. Um, the area along, so between Sycamore up to Ethan Allen had two hundred and fifty, no, more than that. But if you drop down to Hickory, Poplar, city boundary up to Ethan Allen, we were at four hundred and some to five hundred egg masses per acre in that area. And the area between Woodland and Ethan Allen is the biggest patch of forest in the city, I think. Um, just from eyeball, except for Rock Creek, except for Sligo Creek Park by. So we hope there'll be spraying at the end of April. Um, and everybody that's within the impact zone has gotten the letter from the state or the county already with information. They had a meeting last Thursday, um, just a general information session. Session. Um, one of the things that I talked about in my report last year was trying to use the Davie inventory, tree inventory, city tree inventory. It was done in two thousand and one. And about four or five months ago, I was finally able to get it, um, G I F'd and spread out on a map so that we could sort of see what was out there, uh, instead of just having it in tabular form where I'm trying to read how many trees are on the street and what kind they are. Um, this is what their report looks like. And, and this sort of, and the next slide shows some peculiarities in how they collected data. Um, there are no trees along Woodland. Um, I'm not sure why. There are no empty planting spaces along Woodland. I'm not sure why. Uh, that's just, they, they were supposed to be counting street trees and street tree planting pits and I haven't quite figured out how they got some of their results. Um, this is one example. It's Holt, vertical and then four ten coming up and hitting Carroll, that's fire station. It's sort of been the middle of the picture to the right. And there's those eighteen little dots in the corner of Holt and Philadelphia or four ten, whatever it is at that point. Um, and those are four to six inch Virginia pines, oaks, mulberries, uh, and maybe something else that are all bird trees that came from seeds that squirrels or birds buried on a fence line that are on the city side, city street side of the fence, growing, you know, afoot from each other, but because they're in the right of way, they counted them as city trees. Um, they're not planted, they're not in pits, they're not really viable candidates to much, to grow up into mature canopy, street trees, but they're in the data. So all the data that we have is warped by scenes like this sort of across the city. Um, and then there, there's also, they counted the street trees on Ray Avenue, Philadelphia, Carroll, Ethan Allen, that are really state trees, not city trees. So there, there's some data problems that I'm working out as, as I, as I get to it. But it is a tremendous advantage to be able to visualize it and see what we've got. Uh, I'm glad it was done. Lot of it is really out of date. Um, this is what I did. You've, you've maybe seen or heard about the, you bumped my, uh, budget last year to allow me to start doing some maintenance pruning as the Davie management program recommended in that if you do maintenance pruning, your trees are better cared for, you end up saving money because you're not taking as many down over time. This is a list or a visualization of the Norway maples, silver maples and hazardous trees as documented by Davie Trees in two thousand and one, so southwest of Sligo Creek Park. Um, and these are the ones that I would, would prioritize for pruning because those are the ones that fall apart and the, the Norway maples and the silver maples tend to fail pretty easily, uh, in snow loads or ice loads or even in rainstorms with good winds. So I was gonna prioritize these and have tree company prune them all, uh, as the first year in the cycle, a five to six year cycle. Um, and then I did another look and this is all the trees that Davie has, um, in that same zone. And I realized that if we went around and did all these trees, next year I'd have to be able to explain to the guys where these trees were that they didn't prune. And the organization of that and ensuring that they were hitting the right trees and not pruning trees that they pruned this year would be more than I could deal with. So we've ended up working, so they're in North Tacoma above Piney Branch is where we've been concentrating, done, uh, Tacoma Avenue, Boston, uh, New, is it New York? Albany. We're gonna go over and get, there's a bunch of, as this shows, there are a bunch of Norway maples down Grant. We took two out when we put in the sidewalk, but there's still a bunch left there, so we're gonna get those. They're sort of in the same area. And then there was another inventory done that also actually geolocated, um, the park trees and the individual parcel, city parcel trees. And so I'm having the guys do, they did jackiea and they're now working over in Spring Park, uh, trying to get some of the hazard stuff out of there, uh, before it gets too dangerous and, uh, in the school bus wait zones. Um, this also includes, if, if you think about the number of trees that we can prune in a year being what's there in the top left corner or lower left corner, but this data also includes all the trees that are one, two, three, four, five inches in diameter. So there's a lot less pruning than, than you would think if you look at this. Uh, the ones, the hollow, empty spaces, I don't know if you can see it in the paper, are, um, are trees that are priority double zero or oh one, which means there's no priority to prune them because they're not dangerous or really in need of pruning and that would be your smaller trees. There's a whole bunch of them in this data. Um, then over, I'm using two contractors, uh, one on the western side of Sligo Creek and another on the eastern. Um, this is Garland, Jackson Flower Avenue side. These are, again, the, the prior, this is on, whoops, okay. Ah, technology gets me.
This is part of the earlier slide I had.
This is west, west, east. This is the Norway and silver maples and high priority slides, trees over between Long Branch and Sligo Creek. And again, I was gonna have, I'm just doing sort of the same thing for both, both areas of the city. This is what I was gonna have the eastern contractor prune, um, until I looked at this and figured, why not just have them do them all? We've actually done, I think there's maybe ten or twelve more, uh, trees on Flower Avenue that were behind parked cars that we didn't get to. Um, and I think that's all that we haven't gotten to in this section of the city in the last three weeks. A bunch of these trees are no longer there, a bunch are too small to really need pruning. Um, and that is being tracked as the guys do the pruning. We're collecting data and I'll be updating the database, um, to reflect what's actually there and trying to find some help to go out and do an accurate inventory of tree planting possible locations so that next year there would be, I don't know, a, a bunch of dots on here that would reflect empty tree spaces. Um, and we'll go from there and try and find something to fill them. That is the last slide, yeah.
Thank you. Um, could you just explain a little bit more about when you said that, uh, that you had the twenty-five percent rejection rate on the trees? Those were trees that were bulk buy by the city and you were gonna try and plant them on private property?
Now, those were right of way, trees that I was gonna plant in the right of way, which is in a front yard.
Because there's no sidewalk?
Or, or between the sidewalk and the curb. Uh, but historically, apparently, the city has offered, uh, homeowners an opportunity to not accept a tree in their front yard. It, it's on, it's on.
Okay.
It's in public right of way.
So we could put it there?
So we could put it there, but have apparently in the past written letters notifying homeowners that we would like to plant a tree there. And if the homeowners don't want a tree there, we haven't planted a tree.
And we have a sense of why they don't want them or we just say, it doesn't matter, they don't want them?
You know, it really varies. They, they don't wanna rake the leaves. Um, they don't understand that, no, I'm not gonna plant an oak under a wire and watch it be butchered in three years. You know, I tell them it's a small tree, they say, I've heard that before. Um, all, all, all the reasons that people don't like trees. We've got enough trees in our yard, our backyard is full of oaks, we don't need anymore. Um, yeah.
Would it be possible to, I don't know, try and provide a little bit more background of people in general about why this is needed? Uh, and that we're trying to target putting the right ones in the right places to deal with that earlier slide that you had, that I think we talked about last year as the, the blueberry and the pancake where we're, we're losing canopy and the, the replacement is that small little dot and, uh, if, if we don't get these trees in, they may not like their neighborhood anymore.
You know, it's, education is, it's, it's hard to make people.
Do the right thing.
No, learn if, if they're not really interested in it. If the mind is made up, uh, which is often the case.
Councilmember Simmons and then councilmember Clay.
I'm, just a suggestion that maybe some of the education can be done through the city newsletter, uh, and.
It's.
Make the suggestion, that's all.
Yeah, we're, we're trying.
Appreciate that. I also appreciate this presentation. I think it's, uh, enlightening. It, uh, it's a nice follow-up to last year's presentation, although I think it just reinforces what you said last year, but it's good to see that there's progress made since last year, uh, in that we're actually getting trees and getting some planted and also being more systematic about maintaining the trees that we do have. Um, some of the residents of, uh, Maple Avenue Cor- apartment corridor from here down to so, uh, Sligo Creek, uh, have expressed an interest in having, uh, trees along Maple Avenue. Um, I know that, uh, some of them have talked about, uh, some of the floral trees, uh, but again, I, that's something I think, uh, would be nice if we could look at in the future and when and if you are able to, uh, think about that. I think some of the, the residents would like to help with, uh, maybe seeking grants or helping to find the money to do some of the planning. And I think they would also appreciate the opportunity to work with you in, uh, designing, deciding what trees go in and, and where they're located.
We got eighteen trees in to Maple Avenue this year. There are a bunch of Norway maples at the lower end, sort of below Ritchie, um, that, that are on their last legs. Um, and we will need to replant them fairly soon. Talking about sycamores, we lost a lovely sycamore that was down on the end, private, um, that was starting to fall apart and that's gonna be difficult to replace quickly.
And I know that the, um, one, the one, uh, property owner put in a, a wall along, uh, the sidewalk that they have, I think, uh, damaged some of those trees because I noticed they're really struggling.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure where that is.
From the, just the other side of, uh, Ritchie Avenue.
The first apartment complex?
Right.
Okay. A wall went in before I arrived, but I'll take a look, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. I think actually it's a very effective use of information technology to use all the GIS information and the way that you're using it. So regardless of how the PowerPoint itself operates, all of the mapping in the presentation is really terrific. Thank you very much for all the effort that you put into that.
Right.
Last year, when you came, I asked about adjusting the tree ordinance so that people could get a credit for planting a tree prior to coming in when they knew the tree was gonna go down. And that, I don't think that has happened this year. And that is something that I would really like to see come before the council, is a change to that so that somebody can start planting, they have an incentive to plant the understory trees.
I'd love to do it. I think the, I've got GIS basically figured out, maybe I'll have a bit more time this year, and that would be something that I mention quite frequently to people, that I'd love to be able to let them do that, that I can't guarantee them that if they plant a tree now, they'll get credit for it. So it's, I think the biggest issue is gonna be how do we do it legally and track it so that there really is the correct ratio? Maybe I can do a search in a couple of ordinances, do some Googling and see what I can find about whether it's been done anywhere else.
Okay. When I was growing up, we had sidewalks and parking strips and all that kind of thing, and we also had city street trees. And they planted bottle brush trees in front of my house, and I loathed them, and so did everybody else who had a car with an air conditioning intake system. And people waited for the trees to die. We talked about how long it would be, what was the life of the bottle brush tree, and sort of to sort of move along its demise. And one by one, the bottle brush trees did all die off, and then the city came around and they wanted to plant new trees, and the neighbors went ballistic, like, you know, ah, I finally got all those little pieces of red bottle brush out of my air conditioning system. And then the city let the people select the trees and have a sense of control, and so they provided an option of trees that were available. And when I first came onto the council, I gave to the Public Works Department a tree guide from the city of Oakland. I thought it was really cool. And one of the things that the city of Oakland did was, you actually had to pay for your street tree, but you also got to control what the tree was, and they had a range of appropriate options. And so that's one suggestion that I would make. And a second suggestion, and this will be my last comment, is that the, you know, you're talking about only letting people select the over canopy, you know, the larger trees for the bulk buying program. But maybe what we need is an incentive for planting the kinds of trees that help us with shade and stormwater issues, and a disincentive for having a property in Tacoma Park that doesn't have any trees on it at all. And I don't know if you could do that through like the stormwater pricing structure, if you could additionally do that by providing a discount to people who plant the over canopy trees, that the city might pick up some, you know, I think we planted two of them where like $300 each, if the city paid 50 or $100 of that. But still letting people have the service of having some of the ornamental trees as well, because it is, it is more trees.
The first comment first about selecting the street tree that goes in front of your From a management standpoint, that's less desirable than a unified sort of a block of the same kind of trees from maintenance standpoint, because they're gonna have different maintenance cycles, different maintenance needs, and you're gonna end up coming back and costs go up. Not to say it's not done, I hate seeing crab apples on one side and oaks on the other.
Is that a block by block?
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you do a block all of one species, but then that's, everybody on that block has to agree that that's the kind of tree they want.
That's very good.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's fine. And that's what I was doing was, people weren't rejecting them because they were oaks or amelanchier. They were rejecting them because they didn't want a tree in their front yard. Or they had a tree and they thought this would infringe. That's not much I can do about that. The, I think the bulk buy, where a tree would normally cost 400 and we're getting it at 300, is, is an incentive to buy then. It's an interesting thought about credit for the stormwater. I don't know how you could work that. We've been talking with, when coming to county, about, they have a refund program where if you do various levels of stormwater treatment, the county has, is developing a program where you get a refund for some of the expense, some of the improvements that you put in. It's out of a grant, I think? Stormwater fund. And we've talked about doing the same thing for trees, using some of the stormwater fund to create a discount for tree installation. We're still exploring that talk.
And just before Councilmember Wright talks, I just wanted to observe that I didn't get to point out to people up here the very nicely arranged by Councilmember Clay city logo at her place with the color-coded, color-coded M&amp;Ms that matched perfectly the city logo with orange on top and green on the bottom. I know, so I'm sure you're very capable of arranging block by block what people will plant.
I'm just curious, is it common practice, is it your sense around the country or in this area, that people can decide not to have a tree in front of their house? You call it their front yard, but to be respectful, it really is the city's property, not their front yard. Because you're talking about the strip between the sidewalk and the curb, not the strip between the sidewalk and their front door, right?
Well, the right-of-way.
Right.
Which is, I think technically, city-owned property, but city code requires the homeowner to maintain it. And I think generally, if the county wants to put in a row of trees on the street, they put in a row of trees. And they put in what they think is appropriate for that street. I know DC puts in block or multi-block sections, and they have traditional blocks where this block is an oak block, and so if three out of the 12 die, they put three new oaks back in and just maintain that kind of street. Although they are now, if it's under wires, they don't put an oak back in, they put a different kind of tree in, but they will put in all red buds or all freight myrtles or something down.
In your professional opinion, does it seem like a good policy that we have? Should we be allowing people to say, no, I don't want a tree in the right-of-way in front of my house?
You know, I think that's, you all. It makes my job harder. I think it makes achieving a closed canopy and a full canopy in the city more difficult. But I have to go with history, and that's how it's been done here. And so that's what I'll continue to do, although we can, you know, be glad to talk about it more.
I just was curious about trees taking or not taking, so in and around the community center, some have taken and some haven't. Of the newer ones you planted last year, is that sort of what we saw, is that typical trees taking or not taking, or?
No, these were trees that were ordered for the landscaping to go when the building was completed, which was three years ago. And they sat in their plastic buckets up in the yard with mixed watering results. Some weeks they got water, some weeks they didn't, and they were all overgrown for the buckets that they were in. So that we got any success, I'm very happy with. They were severely stressed, and I was hoping that the effort of digging a hole would be repaid, and we seem to be getting a fair amount of success, although there will be a bunch dead ones that will come out soon.
And will replace, will replace the?
At some point, yeah. That there, since the nursery didn't plant them, they weren't warranted.
Right.
So that'll just sort of have to come out of the regular tree planting budget. I think they're gonna do pretty well.
Okay. I just have a question. I live along Maple Avenue, and what is sort of the policy related to trees and the wires? Because we have, along Maple, we have a lot of trees that seem to be topped and kind of mangled and...
Pepco doesn't like trees in their wires. Those were planted by, I think this assistant city manager in '77, who was not a tree person. And I guess that didn't think about the fact that he was planting a spreading tree that will have multiple branches under a wide cross-section of wire. There was a move afoot a few years ago to cut them all down and replace them, and I'm not sure quite what happened. I'd like to, but I think we're talking multiple years' budgets to remove them and replace them. And that's, that's a street where the right-of-way is troublesome because I can plant trees on the right under the wire, but there is no planting strip on the left coming down the hill. So we're relying on citizens' trees on this side primarily to provide shade over maple. And all we're gonna be able to plant is ornamentals under the wires on the right-hand side.
If I can advise Councilmember Wright to talk to his, I'm not sure which one it would be, but one of your two predecessors who are still in town, and they can describe the pain of that process.
And then just lastly, can you, I know I realized we had to take some trees down in Jackie Park that were unhealthy. Can you just remind me what the plan, I know you have some plan for planting some additional trees there coming up, but?
I'll be doing maples there along the street, which were there by the checkerboard table. I think we've taken out three maples, and I'll get a couple more in there. I have to figure out where to plant the replacements to the trees that were in the playground. They tend to not have a very high survival rate. If I tried to put them back sort of between the trail and the jungle gym play structure, I'd love to try, but I'm not sure how well they would do. We'll maybe give it one or two and pay attention to it. We did get the two lovely maples from, that are out past the stands for next to the ball field that were donated last year by somebody lived down on the corner of Tacoma. They were building a house and had a couple of four-inch sugar maples in their yard where the house was gonna go. They paid to have them tree spaded up, put in the park, and she watered them all summer even though we were doing it. She was very nervous. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson, and I'll just remind all of us that we're at 55 minutes on this item, and we were feeling good about being ahead before, but we're behind now, and I don't wanna cut your questions short, but...
Yep. Well, we got a sycamore in Arbor Day about five years ago and planted it in our backyard, and it was about three feet little stick when we planted it. It's five years later, and it's 30 feet, very healthy and productive. Amazing. Sitting right in a swale, which collects a lot of water, so it's...
That's where they like to be.
Well, I would like us to consider changing the policy for planting street trees so that we'll take some heat in just saying, Todd gets to plant whatever street trees he wants, but we might wanna think about having appeals to the tree commission since we have a quasi-judicial or judicial body in place now. And if somebody doesn't want to, want a tree in front of their house, they can take it to the, I don't know if that resonates with you, but...
We could try and create criteria reasons for accepting a no.
Well, think about that. Maybe that's an option. Thank you.
Secret criteria, they have to guess one of the... I just got a quick question, and I think I heard the answer in your presentation, but I note in the table listing the permit-related activities for 2004, '05, '06, and '07, that the change in relationship between the number of permits issued and the number of waivers issued kind of changed pretty dramatically and went from a fairly even distribution between the two processes to two to one waivers to permits. And is that reflective, it's the next to the last page of the packet, at the bottom of the page, where by 2007, the waivers were two to one over the permits, is, I think I heard you say that that reflected the fact that we're losing a bunch of the bigger trees that qualify for a waiver, and that if that's the case, that would seem to be that, that really hit hard in 2006 and 2007? Or is it something else that changed?
I'm not sure, except my predecessor left in early 2006, and we had the consultants sit in for a couple of months, and then I came in.
I'm not, I'm not sure you wanna give that answer, that's... You're the cause.
Well...
But the number...
I might be. I'm not sure also whether, I'm pretty strict about requiring permits for removals of dead trees, because that's what my GIS is for. I need that data to track what's happening. And I'm not sure that that was always the policy. I think there may have been verbals. Yeah, go ahead, just have the tree guy call me, or that kind of thing. I've had people be very surprised that they needed a permit to take a tree down that was dead, you know, never did before. So I, you know, I can't tell what would cause that change. The numbers of waivers seem to be fairly consistent, although they dropped off in 2007.
Right.
But the total applications went down in 2007.
Yeah, the thing that changed was the number of trees permitted.
The permit in proportion to the waivers.
Right. And also just in sheer numbers?
You know, I'd also wanna think about what, well, in sheer numbers, I'm not sure. That, I don't know. I, it might be interesting to see what tree mortality was across county in relation to the drought last summer. I know we had trees dying all over the city, must have been 30 or 40 that I permed it sort of August through October, that were just big trees with brown leaves on them that died in August. And so maybe rather than a reduction in permits, it's an increase in the proportion of waivers... And so maybe rather than a reduction in permits, it's an increase in the proportion of waivers.
And so, but you were saying that you need a permit to take out a dead tree, but a waiver to take out...
I'm sorry. I mean, no, I need paperwork no matter what, whether it's living or dead. And I have trouble keeping my permits and waivers straight. But you need a waiver, and I have a feeling before that there was perhaps verbal approval.
Okay.
Because I've had people very surprised that they had to apply, not get a permit, had to apply.
Now I think what you're saying makes sense, that there might not have been waivers for dead trees in earlier years. There are now and therefore the proportion has increased.
That, perhaps. And also with the high mortality.
Right.
Increased mortality due to drought stress last year.
Okay. That double explanation, I think, is probably a council one. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will now move to our discussion of committee structure and procedures. A discussion that has had fits and starts over the last couple of years. This council is now getting our crack at it. I know that the clerk has put together a number of pages of information about what we have existing. I know that we have a number of areas that we'd like to discuss. I guess I'd like to give everybody a shot at it. And maybe we'll start with the clerk.
I just wanted to point out for those who are watching, and in case you didn't get a chance to read the whole packet, that as you noted, this discussion was started two years ago with previous council and it has had fits and starts. The previous council did come to a few, to consensus on a few issues. And those were that candidates for committees are to be current on city taxes, fines, fees, and penalties. And we did create an application form for committees, for committee applicants to use. That applicants for reappointment to committees must submit applications, but they need not be interviewed by the council. That all committees are to report to council at least annually. And I was asked to arrange for training on the requirements of the Maryland Open Meetings Act, which was done, it was about a year and a half ago, I think. Quite a while ago. But it was well, pretty well attended. We invited all the committee chairs and others to attend. And there is a video in Granicus on the webpage for anyone who's interested in taking a look at that. It was somewhat interesting. I just wanted to highlight, I recognize there are a lot of issues floating around. And you may want to just set aside everything that's been done so far and start fresh. And I know there are a number of issues. What I wanted to mention that, the one issue that I've heard about from committee members is, from some committee members, is that there needs to be a process for removing members who are inactive, who don't show up for meetings. And I wanted to point out that there is a process to do that, laid out in the code. And it requires the committee to request, to adopt a resolution requesting the council to remove a committee member. So there already is a structure in place for doing that. Not that I'm aware of a committee that's done it in the years that I've been here, but there is that option. I think that's what I wanted to highlight. I tried to lay out some information about the committees in these tables, some similarities and differences. And historically, as you all know, there are reasons why committees were formed with different criteria and different residency criterias, different, obviously, different numbers of members, different reporting requirements. And there are historical reasons for that. And I don't think that one size fits all, but it may make a lot of sense to standardize things somewhat. And just wanted to give that little introduction and go on from there.
Thank you.
I can answer any questions if...
Okay. What, I just have one quick follow-up on your, the four points that you reiterated about what the previous councils decided. And that's on the training on the Maryland Open Meetings Act. And I noticed that there was the, what it was here at the back of the packet? That was the, I'll call it the city regulations, whatever was back here.
Administrative regulations.
Administrative regulations. And it specifically addressed a number of areas in the Open Meetings Act and minutes and that kind of stuff. Have the committees been following those procedures? Does your office have the information from the committees that the Open Meeting Act requires?
For many of the committees, either I have them or the departments that work directly with the committees have minutes on site. They're not physically in my office, but they are here. There are some committees that have difficulty getting a quorum and consequently don't actually have meetings or meetings with quorums and don't produce minutes. Some meet very sporadically. But the ones that meet, that are well populated and meet regularly are generally very good about producing minutes, scheduling their meetings.
Okay. Thanks. Councilmember Snipper followed by Councilmember Simmons.
I have a relatively quick thing just to start it off, hopefully we can get agreement. There's a number of things that I call the low-hanging fruit, which seems like we could agree on. And those are things like, you know, every committee should have bylaws. And one way to do it is if they don't have bylaws, we can have a default set of bylaws and kind of the opt-out idea. You know, this is your bylaws unless you decide to change them, kind of thing, get that done. The same thing with reporting. You could just pick a month for each committee. And, you know, they have to report, somebody reports in whatever month is assigned. Just to kind of move, get the checkboxes checked on some of the really sort of obvious ones here. Because I was pretty surprised, I hadn't realized quite the variety of stuff in this committee. It was kind of eye-opening. I do think we could go through and develop some pretty simple strategies to get a lot of this kind of stuff cleaned up. Because it just seems crazy not to have bylaws, for example. You have a comment here?
Could I say one thing? Don't forget, I mean, it's obvious, but a lot of that is often laid out in the ordinance establishing the committee. So they're working with some kind of a structure. They have the basic requirements that any committee would have, the Open Meetings Act type requirements. And then a lot of times, the structure is laid out in the ordinance that established the committee.
That's so-called bylaws?
No, but given that bylaws are the operating procedures for the committee, oftentimes it's right there in the ordinance, what they have to do and how they have to do it. It's, in some cases.
So, so the little, the noes in here? Are you telling me that the noes aren't necessarily noes?
That means they haven't drafted specific, an actual set of bylaws that lays out in great detail when they'll, when they'll meet, how many officers they'll have, what their process for setting the agenda. Some committees have very specific bylaws that determine exactly how they'll do everything and others are much more free-form.
That was exactly my point, is that there's only a small number that don't have bylaws, for example, and it would be fairly easy to say, start with these. These are your bylaws unless you change them, kind of thing. The same thing with reporting requirements. It should be easy just to say, June is your month, you know, or whatever. Just to move the process forward on some of these things.
Councilmember Simmons?
I absolutely agree with Councilmember Snipper and think that he's picked two of the low-hanging fruit, or identified at least two of the low-hanging fruit. One of the things that strikes me in looking at the material, and thank you, Jesse, for organizing this for us. I see that we have many different types of groups that the city council has formed over the past many years. We have boards, commissions, committees, task forces. And I think the one area, or the one type of group that I have heard the most questions from members are advisory groups to this council. And so I would like to suggest that when we start to focus on where we expend our energies initially, that we focus on council advisory groups. So that we can give them clearer direction and also make more effective use of the advisory committees. And I think that our approach should be to develop a comprehensive set of standards for advisory committees, but providing mechanisms for some flexibility when we or future councils think that it's necessary. So I wouldn't want us to say that every committee has to have N number of members, but that, we do say that, you know, any ordinance is forming committees would have to define the minimum and maximum number of members. That one's pretty obvious, but there are some other things that I think we should discuss. And I think it would be helpful to lay out all of those parameters and then decide, you know, what the values are for them. You know, how the committees interact or the groups interact with the council, how the groups interact with city staff, and how we give direction to the groups. And so another one of the low-hanging fruits that I would like to add is how the council interacts with the advisory groups. And I would like to suggest that we do that by giving clear direction to the advisory groups with clear schedules for when we want end products returned to us. Thank you.
You have some?
I'm not sure where to start. I mean, I think there's a host of issues to talk about. I agree with Ruben and Terry that we should knock off the easy ones first. But I think there are going to be ones that we actually, we do need to debate, are gonna require some back and forth and debating. And I guess my suggestion about process related to those is let's put them up, debate them, and then make decisions individually so that we don't end up going on and on and on for, around and around and around. Because I think sometimes you can sort of forget, if we, you know, if we don't bring this back up again for two or three weeks, we may forget what was debated on a particular issue. So if we're gonna bring it up and debate it, let's, in that same council meeting, decide on the direction we're gonna move forward on it, would be my opinion.
I've enjoyed this process already. And I don't have much to say right now, except that I agree with Terry and Ruben, that particularly Terry, that a pragmatic approach to these committees is important for us so that we know what we're starting and why we're starting it and what product or response or advice we'll get back. And I think the committees deserve to know, to know what their tasks are and to what extent they can interact with staff and to what extent they're responsible to us for their work. And I think they also deserve to know what priority their work fits under. And we've done some good work this winter and spring about what our priorities might be. And so that's work that we've done with staff. And it's hard for me to think of a committee that would be formed that wouldn't be, fall under one of the general priorities that we have. So that can help them get a sense of who they are and what they're doing. I like Terry's ideas of trying to determine whether something's an advisory group or a board or a commission, and there are differences between those things. The tree commission has a quasi-judicial task, as does the ethics committee or commission. So to the extent that we can work on differentiating one kind of committee or a group from another is probably helpful to them. Other than that, Jesse probably has the best perspective on this and maybe can give us more about what she would like us to do when we're setting up a committee or how we'd like to structure it.
Just two additional thoughts. One, I do think we should try and figure out a way to involve some of the people who have sat on committees. I know some of the members of the council have, in getting input into the process. And then the second thing is just that, you know, I think probably if you look back, particularly on advisory committees, the ones that are most successful have an effective chair. And so maybe that's gonna make sense to figure out a way to do a training or best practices for the committee chairs.
Can I, I'll make a point on that last one. I have co-chaired three committees and I found that the co-chair approach works well. My own approach was always enhanced, in my opinion, and balanced with somebody who had a different way of working with people and tasks. And I found it to be very productive and helpful to have someone else.
I would just like to suggest as a next step that we build a matrix of the different parameters that control advisory groups and that we start to work towards filling those in. But at the same time, we discuss those low-hanging opportunities and how we can move forward with those in the short term.
I'll weigh in with a thought or two here. I think one of the things that has come up repeatedly over the last few months as we've talked about having this discussion has been the extent to which we have uniformity among the various committees, commissions, boards. I know that that's come up in the area of, well, gee, you know, everybody's supposed to be a city resident on all committees. And we can see from the matrix that we've got in the packet tonight that that's the case in many committees, but not all. And so it kind of brings up the overall question of maybe one starting point for dealing with decisions is, are we comfortable with different, a variety of parameters for how groups are established and how they operate? Or is there an extent to which we're trying to regularize that as much as possible? And that'll guide many of the decisions we make. Maybe if we can start with that one as a kind of a general direction for the conversation, that'll help a lot of answers. Any thoughts on that one?
I think we, our goal is to regularize the committees to the extent that's reasonable. You know, and I think the way that the question of, do they have to be, do committee members have to be Tacoma Park residents is handled well in the current city code, which says that they do have to be residents of the city. But it says unless the council specifies differently in the formation of the committees. So I think there has to be that flexibility. But I think that we want to set the standard of what makes sense in most of the cases.
Does it say that in the code?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Okay.
Section two, nevermind.
Whatever. The thing that it brings to mind is, I'll give a specific example, with the McNAC committee, that it says in the resolution, it uses the word residents. But then, among the first appointments made on that committee were a number of non-residents.
According to the city code, it is, they must be residents of the city at Tacoma Park, and if they move out of the city at Tacoma Park, they are dropped from the active members rule.
But on that committee, it says they'll be residents, or they'll be, I think, four areas of, you know, covering, there's residents and there's some other stuff. But then, in the appointments that we made to the committee, we knowingly appointed people who were not residents of Tacoma Park, right from the very beginning.
I wasn't making an argument that we knew what we were doing.
So given that, what rules? Clerk has an observation.
I just wanted to point out that the code is referring to the statutory council-appointed committees. So the McNAC, to my way of thinking, isn't a statutory committee. I think of those as the committees that are established by ordinance and added to the code. McNAC, HSIC, and the land use committee are not that. You can define the membership as you wish, but I don't think this applies to them.
That's why I'm not a city clerk. Thank you.
That's helpful. So we generally, we want to legalize it as much as possible, but we're comfortable with differences as required or necessary.
But maybe we should have some criteria to think about. For example, with the decision around whether someone should be a resident of the city. In terms of, I mean, is there some reason why it would be good to have input from someone outside the bounds of the city? Or maybe there, is there some reason why only a city resident should be on here?
And I can tell you, I can recall some conversations that previous councils had where I remember making some of the exceptions. One of those was the public safety committee. The, there was a desire to include, I think in that particular case, it was representatives of the business community, and the individuals who wanted to be appointed were active in the city in business, but not necessarily residents of the city. And the council felt that it was important to have those other perspectives on the committee, and therefore, in that case said that members of the committee did not have to be residents. I think in the Press and Humanities Commission, there are a number of people who are not residents, but it was just a, I think there's something in there about having a certain minimum number who are city residents, recognizing that there was expertise that could be called forth that wouldn't necessarily be in the city. So I think as the council recognized that there were areas of expertise, exceptions were made.
So for example, in the Press and Humanities Commission, we would actually need to change the city code, right? Because that's a statutory committee?
But then, unless otherwise provided, in specific sections.
So in the establishment of the committee, it was provided for.
Well, we could easily draft up a set of guidelines, as you were just outlining, for those things that we have thoughts and opinions about, and then requirements for things that really need to be requirements. And, you know, clearly we should start with getting the requirements out of the way, and then move on to the guidance things, frankly.
I see, I made a note here to myself, among the statutory committees where not everyone is required to be a resident, are the public safety committee, the sub-advisory board, the Press and Humanities Commission, and COLTA. And those all have areas of expertise that are stated.
So, I mean, do we think as a requirement that meeting at least twice a year is, you know, the rule? And then a guidance would be quarterly would be better? I mean, should we just march down the thing here? Before we leave the non-residents, would we put some cap on the number of non-residents that could be in committee, in the committee, or would we do that committee by committee?
Or we can do that as we make appointments.
Or we can let the committee itself decide.
I can see this is going to be over quick.
Yeah, I was trying not to.
I think it would be helpful at this point to, I don't, to complete the matrix, and also to kind of weigh in and just talk about one type of committee at this point, because when we're thinking about all the possibilities with all the different types of organizations that we have, I fear that it becomes too difficult to try to manage. There's too many exceptions, too many variables.
What types, Terry, do you see besides advisory and judicial or quasi-judicial?
Well, there's the difference between the statutory and non-statutory is also, I think, volunteer groups, which I mention only because I think it's a group that this council doesn't need to regulate. And I think it's something that the city manager should form and regulate as she sees fit, because I think volunteer groups are more of a supplement to the city staff.
Can you give an example of a volunteer group?
I think it's not set up this way right now, but the way I see the operating, operations of the emergency preparedness group, they seem to be supplementing city staff more than they are advising to the city council. And in fact, Chief Rakushi is co-chair of that, of that group, which would be totally inappropriate for a council advisory committee, in my way of thinking.
So are there statutory and non-statutory as one differentiator, volunteer and non-volunteer as another differentiator? Judicial and advisory are two types? Am I following what, are there any other kind of classification? You can tell I'm a database programmer at this point.
I haven't, I haven't thought it through on, you know, boards, commissions, and, you know, kind of how they all fit into this typing, and what the differences are in their structure.
Voluntary, non-voluntary, didn't, we need another pair, pairing there. Just all of them are voluntary.
Yes. Okay, working groups, and that's not even, I quit.
Well, you're a database guy too, Terry, so we want to be able to figure this out. Maybe not right here.
Oh, yeah, but it's making my head hurt.
At another time, but, I mean, this is of interest to me, and it seems like there's some way to clarify it. And you're on, I think you're on the right track. Let's deal with one type at a time, or at least think about one type at a time.
Yeah, and again, I was, maybe I seen that advisory was the one where, that's the one type of group that I hear the most questions from, and where I think we have the greatest opportunity to make quick changes to improve their performance.
In my ignorance, I don't know the real difference between a statutory and a non-statutory committee. Jesse, can you help me out?
It's only that the statutory committees are actually adopted by two reading ordinance, and they're in the city code. And most of these are, except for the three that I mentioned, the health services, the land use, and McNAC, are three that are not.
I think legally, the statutory committees operate as an extension of this council, and so they're really the ones that fall under the open meetings act and public information act.
So does statutory mean they're of more interest to us? Or more, more an extension, as you say, of what we do?
Right.
And so going back to the public service, public safety committee, which sounds like you would put as advisory, volunteer, non-statutory.
Forget the volunteer for right now. They're all voluntary.
Advisory, non-statutory.
I think public safety citizens advisory committee should be a statutory.
And it is.
And it is advisory group. And that's one that I think we should be talking about.
So the statutory and non-statutory is an important distinction to make. Why would one be one way and another be another way? Why would we actually do one, and we find it more interesting, or more powerful, or more?
I think, if I may, and I think it's because the statutes, the committees that you've actually, the council actually put in the city code are meant to be permanent committees, whereas health services, land use, were not meant to be ongoing permanent.
Okay, that's a good distinction.
We've had some other committees, the community center liaison committee was another one that was established, I guess, for a particular purpose, but it wasn't meant to go on forever. McNAC is a little.
Tazzy was another one.
Tazzy was very defined, and, yeah. So this permanence is an important aspect.
And then, as it is appointed committee by this council, then it does require the adherence to the open meetings act and the public information act, even though it's not statutory?
Absolutely. The council establishes it.
There's a threshold, more of a burden on a committee based on whether they're permanent or non-permanent, statutory or non-statutory. And if they get to that sense of permanence and statutory-ness, they become, there's no other burden than that is to adhere to the.
Now, they both have to. That was.
Okay, are there any, are there any committees that don't have to comply with the open meetings there?
If they're not appointed by this council.
Only if they're not appointed by the council. But those are the only ones, we're only interested in the ones appointed by this council.
Correct.
So that level of permanence or statutory-ness doesn't add any burden to them, it just adds them to the statute.
It's not of interest particularly to the council.
So we don't really care about statutory and non-statutory?
Exactly, every time, yes, we do.
Okay, so we do care only about permanence and non-permanence, or, and we only care about that in that if we put a committee together that we deem permanent, there'll be no end date. If we put one together that we deem not permanent, we'll put an end date on that. Is that correct?
That sounds good.
Would that be fair to say?
That sounds good. And thinking about it this weekend, I only came up with, you know, two distinctions between types of committees that we, that I think we should be creating, and that is the advisory is one type, and quasi-judicial.
Quasi-judicial. So back to, I liken this kind of distinction, that advisory and quasi-judicial are the two main types. The permanent or non-permanent, so like a lease, how long a lease are you signing here? Is it a one year, a six month, a one year, a two year, a five year? Or is it, you know, is it getting into the category of mortgage where you're in for a long time?
But it seems like judicial would not, would always be permanent, and advisory would be, could be.
Only if judicial was, was responsible for something that was not permanent. Like a train track going, or maybe the, well, I don't know. Yeah, unless, that's, you're probably right.
So that's part of the guidance thing, where the council would give itself some guidance as to when to have a sunset provision, and when to assume that it's just going to be for some.
Until further notice, yes.
Until further notice, kind of thing.
And the one would have to be a requirement, it's just a guidance issue.
Whereas some of these other ones, like complying with the open meeting laws, and having limits and bylaws and so on, are kind of requirements.
That's required for everybody, yeah. So really, so it sounds to me like we've got the length of the term that we're in putting on this committee. There's the length, which is always an issue. And there's whether it's judicial or advisory. I don't hear anything else.
And then there's all the different parameters underneath that. You know, do they have to adhere to Robert's rules order? Do they have, you know?
Right, those are, right, those are all things to put in place or discuss. But judicial and advisory, and you had, Terry, you had talked about, well, let's concentrate on advisory, not judicial.
Yes, because I'm unaware at this moment, I haven't had members of any of the quasi-judicial committees come to me and say, you know, I'm having trouble understanding how we should operate in any degree. Where I do have people from advisory committees raising questions that make me believe that we could do a better job in giving guidance to them.
Okay, so we're only talking about advisory? For the sake of argument, it sounds like we kind of agree that we're only talking about advisory, except Josh has his hand there.
I think there's one exception, which is the issue of how members are appointed to committees, which is something I want to talk to at some, about at some point, which is, sort of, there's two aspects to it. One is how do organizations, how is it decided that an organization gets to appoint someone to a committee? And then the second is, if that's the case, how is it that that individual gets appointed? And one of the judicial committees has appointed, has organizational specific seats on it, which is the sub-advisory committee. So in that way, I think there is an issue we still need to talk about that cuts across both committees, so we don't have to do that so tonight, but.
Right.
And I agree, there's other things that probably cut across both types.
Appointment, residence, length, other issues that we have to resolve in general, these kind of general things? Am I on the right track here?
Beg your indulgence, and let me prepare a list that I'm not prepared to do tonight. I think there are a number of things.
Okay. Bruce, how are we going to approach this?
I'd like to come back on a number of those things that we've talked about, but also try and maybe knock one off tonight. And the one I'm thinking about is reporting.
Reporting?
Because it seems to me that we've mostly done that, in that we've said that we want to hear back from committees at least once a year. We have timeframes that are established, given when the terms expire, that we need to hear back from them. A previous council put that in there, made the change from re-interviewing folks who were coming back for reappointment, and said, "We don't necessarily need to re-interview." That was the way we always heard about what was going on with the committee. We would now have the report back from the committee. And where we've ended up is that we have terms expiring at the end of the first quarter, the second quarter, and the third quarter of the year, but we don't have any terms expiring at the end of the fourth quarter of the year. And the practical effect of that is, we have all the reports from all of the committees coming back to us in the first half of the year. And so we've jammed up all of that into half of the year. Is there anything there that we want to change?
I would advocate for maybe more frequent reporting, because I think as we get into the giving clearer direction and giving pass to the groups, I think we may want more frequent reporting, although we may.
But we could, we could do that on a case-by-case basis, as we have those discussions and need that feedback. But if we say at least once a year, and tie it to the reappointment schedule, we guarantee, hopefully, that we get that feedback.
I think that's a really good approach, Bruce, and you could, we could just categorize committees into one of four types, spring, fall, summer, and winter.
And that's kind of what we've done, except we don't have any fourth quarter category. And so we might need to redistribute some of these around, and spread the workload out over the whole year.
Right. And if their, yeah, if their cycle's always up in the spring, then we'll expect a report in the winter or something like that.
Yeah, we've kind of got that on the, on the matrix here now. We've got it, and you can see that really the only ones that come back after the first half of the year. half of the year are the Ethics Commission, which we don't hear back from, the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee, and the Tree Commission.
Why don't we?
And everybody else is.
Why don't we have the staff come up with a suggested, because they know when the workload is and when, you know.
And, and then.
Like the Board of Elections, you know, I think Jesse could pick when is the best time to have the Board of Elections report, and so on.
And then what we would have to do is adjust some of the code that has these in there.
Right. Got that, Jesse?
And so, have we taken a hearing of reporting?
I hope so.
So, the only requirement is that we're going to have them report at least once a year, but we can ask for more frequent reports.
The length, it seems to be a, the length of appointment, I think, is important. I don't know if we can resolve that tonight. I note that the Land Use Committee sunsets in twenty nine, 2010, and that's the most recent one we did. Then there's the Health Impact, that sunsets in 2009. All the rest seem to be perpetual, and is that what we really want? So, I guess I would, I would recommend a review to see which ones sunset, and keeping in mind that we can always renew their lease, or whatever it is, however we want to phrase it, their term. And, and that may, and I don't know if we want to ask the committees what they think their appropriate term are, terms are, or again, Jesse has a sense of when, when it makes sense to have a term or what length.
And my sense is that going down through the list, I didn't really see any of the statutory committees that would necessarily lend themselves to any sunset.
I should leave off the Pre-Bermak Committee, which, which the previous council had discussed as, as one that is ripe for.
Review. For the deep six.
Yeah, yeah, I'm afraid so, yes.
Okay, well, that makes sense. It was a topical committee, and its time has played out. If we had thought that the council who, that incorporated, put together, had thought through, well, let's, this is a topical committee, it's a year kind of thing, and we can renew it, and if the issue is still hot, or whatever, then.
And it, it would still be more active if there hadn't been a court ruling that said we couldn't do it.
Yeah, that would be important.
Yeah. Because it's still of interest. Josh, do you have a comment?
Just related to that, the term expiration, I think if something's going to be a temporary committee, we have three of them right now, we should, there should absolutely be a sunset. So, it's sort of funny that we created a McNAC without a sunset on it. That's not to say that it could be renewed, and I don't know what, you know, I'm sure there was discussions about that at the time, but I think that should probably be a rule that would be some time-bound aspect to it, and we can always extend it.
Terry?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to remind us of Councilmember Wright's suggestion that we think about how we can involve the current committee members in this discussion, because I think that's going to be important at some point as, as we're doing this, to make sure that we get some real-world experience, rather than us sitting here guessing what everybody needs.
Okay, so, we'll just meet next week, when we weren't going to meet, we'll just spend three hours talking about this. Doug over here.
That's the point, him.
Can't we give this to a committee to do?
No. What are the rules before?
Committee of the whole. Any other thoughts for tonight? And I believe that, Bob, was there anything that we wanted to do for the legislative update?
I can just mention just a few items that Suzanne had, had provided me. The mayor is scheduled to testify on behalf of the city at the county council's probably carrying on their budget on Tuesday, April 8th. I think Suzanne had put a copy of the budget summary in each of your mailboxes. We'd probably ask that if you have any particular thoughts about what you would like to see included in the mayor's testimony, if you could please give that to Suzanne. It is her intention to provide some draft testimony and to send that out early next week. I think Councilmember Robinson had a particular interest in a bill that you had asked about, I believe it was last week, about local preferences in terms of procurement. It was House Bill 319, and Suzanne did ask me to let the council know that that has been withdrawn, so it's no longer under consideration. One item that the council may have some interest in is House Bill 835. This was the Mercury Switch Removal Bill that the Committee on the Environment, Catherine Tunis, I believe, has spoken to many of you about this in the past. There had been a number of amendments to that bill, and she has indicated to Suzanne that at this point, she feels that those amendments basically kind of got the integrity of the bill. We're not sure if it's still moving forward or not, but that's something that we'll obviously monitor.
I, I have a piece of information from Catherine Tunis, very apropos. Tom Huckel reports that our Mercury Switch Bill passed the House today, 134 to 3. Now we have less than two weeks to get it through the Senate. Senator Dyson will be leading the effort. You all got an email about this?
And the report got through with that, does it getting amendments?
Apparently, and since the, wasn't it passed in the Senate? Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, passed in the Senate previously.
That's been sent previously, so we could get it.
Great, thank you for that update. I think you all know that the mayor in particular spent considerable time testifying in Annapolis on the various immigration-related bills. At this juncture, the bills that would basically kind of punish sanctuary cities, if you will, do appear to be dead, but obviously, that's something we'll continue to monitor throughout the session. I guess, Mayor, anything else from a legislative standpoint, from the Legislative Committee of MML?
No.
Anything else? Okay. That's it.
Okay, we're turned.